Cindy, to get a cue for when we begin.
There you go. I just want to get Paul on board. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you're ready to start the meeting.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. This is the City of St. Helena Regular City Council Meeting, Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. This is Mayor Jeff Ellsworth, and we will begin our meeting with our assistant to the city manager, helping us understand remote access and our Spanish language interpretation for the meeting.
Yes, good evening, and thank you, everyone. So tonight's meeting will have live Spanish interpretation, and to access the interpretation, you will need to download the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or smartphone. And instructions on how to do that are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda and on the city's website. So once you join the Zoom, once you download the Zoom app and you join the meeting, you will see a small globe, it'll either be at the top or the bottom of your screen. You'll be able to click on that globe and access the live Spanish interpretation. And then, for those who are participating by phone only, you have a way to speak during public comment. So you'll want to dial 669-900-6833, and then at the prompt, you'll want to enter 835-991-84501, and then press pound, and then during public comment, you'll press star nine to speak. And if you are joining via the Zoom application, all you need to do is use the raise hand feature at the top or the bottom of your screen. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'll get into our pledge of allegiance. If you would mute your microphones and place your hand on your heart and join with me, we'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we'll do our roll call, please.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dory?
Here.
Councilmember Chito?
Here.
Councilmember Hardy?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thank you. So now we'll move to our public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agenda, future agendas. But in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. At this point, is there any public comment?
Yes, there is public comment. Chris Malan, I'm going to allow you to speak. Hold on one second. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, I've unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Chris Malan, the Executive Director of the Institute for Conservation, Advocacy, Research, and Education. And we've been following the disastrous pollution events at the Clover Flat landfill since this all became more public in 2019. We have been working closely with the water board and the local agency that oversees landfills with the staff, people that are overseeing Clover Flats' problems with pollution. And there was a recent release of, by Golda, who's the company that does the monitoring. And this report came out on January 5th. And from 2019 to present, Clover Flat is exceeding all pollutant levels beyond the allowable amount, all pollution levels, oil and grease, total suspended solids, iron, aluminum, zinc, pH nitrates, every single monitoring pollutant is exceeding the allowable level. And you should know about this because this is going into our waters, it's going into our streams, it's going into the river, and it's getting into the groundwater. Clover Flat did not install all the groundwater monitoring wells that they were supposed to until just recently. I emailed the water board today, and she said they just finished two very critical sites that are next to the alluvium. So everything draining from Clover Flat that goes into the river, those two wells were not fixed. They were inaccessible, and so we don't have any data on how far this pollution plume has migrated. But the water board said that in the next round of monitoring, we will get data on that. So I think that Clover Flat should be shut down. I think they've polluted our waters and our streams and our groundwater to a terrible extent, and this should not be allowed to go on. People swim, people recreate, people fish. We drink the water that comes, the groundwater and streams are used for many different purposes, the water. So we shouldn't be allowing this ongoing pollution to occur, and we should move into some other kind of refuge location and get the state-of-the-art business going so that we're not polluting the air and the water. And we all know this is in a severe fire area, and we know there was an explosion there in the glass fire. And I talked to the water board about this today, and they've, they're moving to try to make sure the methane doesn't explode again. So, you know, it's in a bad location, and the management has not been such to protect the public trust. Thank you, and you should look at the Golden Report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional public comments at this point?
I am looking right now to see if there are any raised hands, and I'm, let me just scroll up here. I am not seeing any.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nixon. I'm going to bring it back to, to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items and AB 1234 reports. Before we get started in that, I just want to mention that we are, you know, still in this COVID emergency, but working towards recovery, and we'll have some information in the meeting about how we're working at these phases. So we'll start with reports by staff and city council, and so we'll start with our city attorney, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we did have a number of closed sessions over the, over the break since our last council meeting, and so I wanted to just report out on those. We had a meeting, a special closed session meeting on December 9th for one case of anticipated litigation and one case of existing litigation. We had special closed session meetings on December 11th and December 16th. Both of those were on one case of existing litigation. And then we had another closed session yesterday, January 11th, also on one case of anticipated litigation and one case of existing litigation. And there was no reportable action taken by the council at any of those meetings. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. We'll move now to our, our city manager, Mr. Presswich.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. As we turn the page to a new year, I thought it would be appropriate, given how challenging the year 2020 was, to reflect a bit on our prior year. So I've put together a brief PowerPoint, and Priya will assist with this. I'm calling this 2020, a year of challenge, sacrifice, achievement, and gratitude, and I'll share on each of those fronts, and we can move to that next slide, Priya. 2020 was really a remarkable year in terms of challenges. I suppose that there was an omen at the beginning of the year because in late December, there was smoke damage at City Hall on Main Street, and over the holiday and into January, we were relocating our City Hall staff to the interim City Hall facility on Railroad due to the smoke damage at City Hall. And so there were a number of impacts on the city staff at that time. But obviously, the real, the real story, one of the, one of the real stories in 2020 for the City of St. Helena and across the country and the, and the world was COVID-19. And as you know, we've been adjusting to that for more than nine months now, quite a challenge. One of the immediate impacts of COVID was a realization that there would be significant revenue impacts to the city's budget, and we worked very hard between March and June of 2020 to address a projected $5.8 million revenue loss. As the summer matured, we moved into the LNU complex fire, one of the, one of the largest fires in California history. That included some mandatory evacuations in the city. We then, three weeks later, essentially moved into the glass fire, again, one of the top 10 fires in terms of economic loss in the, in California history, again, resulting in evacuations in St. Helena, and as we know, some loss locally inside the city and nearby. Through, through the fires and through the end of the, the summer, we also endured some additional power shut-off activity with PG&E. There were some very warm days, a day we would consider a heat emergency, and we opened a cooling center. And not to be outdone, we closed the year with a realization that we needed to move into a Phase II water emergency and conserve as much water as possible moving into 2021. So quite a remarkable list of challenges, and, and that influenced everyone, whether it was a citizen, a business, or our, our employees and the services that the city provides. I'm going to review, we can move to the next slide, Priya, and I'm going to reduce my video. So in terms of sacrifices, our entire community sacrificed. And I, and I apologize for the history tour here because I think my own, my own reflection, looking back on this, is it was, it was quite a traumatic time, but it changed the, the world as we know it. And all of us have worked to reduce the transmission of COVID by, by adhering to shelter-at-home requirements and other guidelines. Obviously, our businesses have sacrificed, they've made modifications, they've dealt with and adjusted to changing regulations. Our, our public meetings have transitioned to an online environment. It's also created a remote working environment for a number of our city employees. Our city services have had to make adjustments, and as we know, parks and library were two operations that were fairly significantly impacted. And internally, within the organization, we've established a number of protocols in every department to reduce the potential transmission of COVID and ensure that continuity of service. And I also recognize that our employees, as we tackled that $5.8 million projected budget challenge, our, our employees voluntarily reduced their compensation and benefits to help be part of that solution. But not all was bad about 2020. We did, we did check the box on a number of achievements, and I don't want to overlook. So I think leading the list is the fact that we've restored the ecosystem in York Creek and removed the York Creek Dam. This was a project that has lasted for more than 20 years. The notice of completion is on tonight's agenda for the council's consideration. A remarkable feat and a lot of partnership to advance that across the finish line. We've resurfaced the tennis courts. They look great, and I understand our tennis players are enjoying them. I personally like the new color. We had a, we were grateful for the Financing Civic Infrastructure Task Force. A number of volunteers from our community worked hard in the pre-COVID environment and then transitioned during the initial migration to online and were the first committee to actually participate in that transition. And they issued a report mid-year to help the city advance its investments and strategies moving forward on civic infrastructure improvements. I don't also, I also don't want to overlook the good news on the finance front. Our finance department received another distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association for our budget. We also, this is the GFOA, we also received a certificate for excellence in financial reporting for our 2019 CAFR. Navigating all of the challenges that I previously discussed is really an achievement because we, we continue to navigate COVID, and we'll talk more about that later this meeting. We navigated through the fires and are committed to pursuing lessons learned from that as well as all of the other challenges that I noted. And finally, just a nod that with the other social justice issues, were also a very important issue to, to work through in 2020. And I'm proud of the fact that we've begun to advance a conversation on social justice, inclusion, and diversity within the community and within the organization. And we'll close with gratitude because there are so many thank yous that are needed this year as we look back on 2020, the community for its resilience during the COVID pandemic, the fires, the evacuations that impacted a number of our, our community members. I also want to say thank you to our employees for their sacrifices and especially their hard work and dedication. There were literally lives put on the line during those fires, hours worked through the middle of the night, remarkable shifts that were worked, and I really, I very much can't say enough about how thankful I am for their contributions. I also want to recognize the council, our commissions, our boards and committees for all of their work because they have worked tirelessly through 2020, endured the adjustments to this online environment, and continue to provide direction and leadership for the organization. And I want to close with a special thank you to Representative Thompson, Senator Dodd, and Assembly Member Aguirre Curry, and especially their staff as well, their remarkable staff, because they were all instrumental in helping us secure permitting, advance, essentially raise attention for the permitting necessary to advance the York Creek Dam project to construction. A lot of work went in behind the scenes, and we're especially grateful for all of their work and support. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and yes, a challenging year, but also a year where much was accomplished. So we are very appreciative of our, of our staff, of our council, of our community through all of this. Thank you. So we'll now move to our finance director, Dr. Mitz.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth, and council members. I'm going to do a quick screen share. I wanted to just update the council as well as the public. What are fiscal year 2021 slash 22 operating budget is going to look like and what our budget calendar is going to look like? So this is something that we put together every year. I feel like we just got into 2021, and we're already planning for 2022. This particular item was sent out to all council members earlier, and it will be added to the permanent record on the city calendar, or on the, on the iCompass portal through the city's website. So some notable dates that I just wanted to point out. Typically, we don't do a budget workshop until later on in the process. But this year, because we are still in a COVID environment, and it is still a very fluid, and we don't know when we're going to actually be able to completely reopen, what we are planning on doing is that sometime in late February or March, we are going to be planning a workshop, and it's going to be a preliminary budget forecast and budget priorities discussion. And so I just wanted to point that out, that that is something that is going to mirror similar to what we did last year when we did the preliminary budget numbers for the COVID impacts. And that is something that we just want to be able to have the opportunity to present to city council and get some early feedback. Beyond that, the other thing that we are excited to be able to do is now that we have upgraded to cloud version of our Springbrook software system, we are going to be adding in Springbrook budget training for the departments. Because with this new software, we do have some additional functionalities which will make it much easier for departments to be able to enter their data directly into Springbrook. Beyond that, the standard calendar is going to be reviewing the nonprofit grant applications. It will also be the city manager, finance director, finance manager, and department heads working through their individual department budgets to make sure that any discretionary spending is in line with the city council goals that are established. It will be going, reviewing and adopting the five-year CIP budget as well as adoption of the nonprofit, what the nonprofit recommendations will be to city council. We will be going through the fiscal health diagnostic as well as the long-range financial forecast being presented to city council. We have placed a placeholder for two different budget study sessions, so one being May 13th, and then the second one, if needed, being May 27th. And we're looking for final adoption on June 28th, which will be, sorry, June 8th, which that new budget will go into effect on July 1st. So that is just a short, quick recap of what we are looking at our budget calendar to look like for the next upcoming six months. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to our city clerk, Mr. Fopoulos.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and Public Works, Ms. Smithies?
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth, and council members. I just wanted to provide a brief update. If we don't have a water supply update at this meeting, that our Belkane reservoir is currently at 34.6% capacity. We're not out of the wood yet for, definitely not out of the wood yet for Phase II. I'm happy to report that we're slightly above what December ended up at, but we need some rain. And I'm hoping we get that in the next month or two, or four months, actually. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll now move to Ms. DeRosa, our planning and, planning and building.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year. I have nothing to report today.
Thank you. Am I, I'm not seeing anybody on from our police or fire unless I'm missing. Seeing no one from police or fire here this evening. We'll move to our council members. Why don't we begin with Mr. Hall?
No updates.
And Ms. Chito?
Nothing to report.
And Mr. Hardy?
Thank you. I have nothing to report, but I do have two requests to make for future agenda items. First, and kind of highest on my list, although I think they're both matters of urgency, I'd like to see us schedule a meeting to talk about how we can go about analyzing and updating our struggling now to remember what we call it, our safe yield analysis and related water emergency regulations, and also our water neutrality policy to reflect trends in climate change and other environmental constraints that are likely to have effect on our available water supply. So it's a big topic, but I think we need to start somewhere in having a council discussion that will enable us to give staff some direction. And I would love to see that on an agenda as early as possible. Secondly, I would also like to suggest that we invite Chris Thompson from Napa Firewise to talk to us about fire prevention on a large scale. In other words, what, what a program that addresses not just protection of St. Helena, but also areas around us, even the county as a whole. I have spoken to Chris, and I know that Napa Firewise has some ideas about what a program would look like for the county as a whole and, and what parts of that would be of particular benefit to the city of St. Helena.
So I certainly would support both those items. I think as we move forward, we'll be able to figure out how to dovetail those in with, with what we are working on. I know that we, we now have a water consultant that has been brought on, and we can look at how we can tap into all those different aspects that you're talking about, and also certainly fire preparation, not just in St. Helena, but in the surrounding areas, a very important topic. So I think we can look at how we can move that forward as quickly as possible in conjunction with groups like Napa Firewise, the RCD Resource Conservation District, and the county. So I certainly am supportive of those efforts. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Happy New Year to staff and council and our community. We made it. We're still going. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and I, I just want to let you know how much I enjoy this and looking forward to this 2021. I do support Lester's, both of his agenda items, by the way, and I think we should leave it in the hands of our city manager to figure out where those two topics fit naturally in the schedule because he has probably more of an idea where the natural fit would be, but definitely, they're both very, very important to look at. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff, for the updates. I'll be, I'll be very brief. I want to just welcome everybody back. We had a big year last year as Mark went through. I think we can be very productive this year despite challenges. We know that vaccines are coming. There'll be more information out very soon here as the county works with the local hospitals to get this up and running. And so information will be coming out from the county and the city very soon. People can go to the county website to get information there as this sort of rolls out. We still must adhere to the COVID protocol, the wearing of the mask, washing the hands, and watching the distance, avoiding gatherings, you know, the basics. We don't want to forget that as we push forward into what we hope are these recovery phases. I want to mention that the Chamber of Commerce has done an excellent job of compiling resources for businesses who may be feeling these challenges. We want to support our shops, our restaurants, our local businesses. The Napa County Restaurant Group got together and put together a video that is now out online, really promoting the idea of takeout and delivery for supporting our local restaurants over these next coming months that are going to be very, very challenging. Also, the St. Helena Gift Card Challenge. This is where the idea that we all row the boat together here over this next month or two to see everybody through. We've all made it this far. We do not want to lose anybody, whether it's business or personal. If anybody has any challenges or needs resources or help, please reach out to the city of St. Helena, the county of Napa, the Napa Valley Community Foundation, or one of our many local nonprofits, such as the Valley Family Center, Boys and Girls Club, Meanda House, the Food Pantry. And so these, these are available services to our community. And once again, the chamber has done an excellent job of putting together resources for businesses. So any businesses, restaurants, shops, et cetera, that are looking for bridging mechanisms to get through these next month, a couple of months, please reach out to the chamber or the city. I just want to mention that we had, there was an article that came out from Advisor Smith listing St. Helena as one of California's safest cities. That's remarkable. We live in a wonderful town where I believe our community, our families, or the children growing up here can feel safe and protected. We, we have our, our fire department, our police department, our city staff that have helped make this possible, and all this over the last year through the COVID challenges. So there's a big thank you that goes to our staff, to our police department, to our fire department. I'm putting together some printed acknowledgements that I want to present at the next city council meeting just to really recognize the hard, incredible work that's been done here over the last, the last year. So once again, I want to thank everybody for hanging in there, and we will get through this with that.
Mr. Mayor, may I just finish with one other comment that I'd like to make? Two minutes or one minute?
Oh, yeah, please.
I just, I just want to say that I am very sorry to hear about anybody who is affected by COVID and the pandemic. Folks may have lost somebody, either a friend or, or a family member, or somebody may be hospitalized right now or struggling. That's heartbreaking for me to hear, and I just want to let you know that you are in my heart. I'm thinking about you, and blessings to all of you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think it's very touching and important for, for people to hear. So thank you. We're, we're, we're all in this together, and we will, we will keep working forward. So thank you. So with that then, we'll move now to our presentations and public recognitions. And tonight we've got a special proclamation that Ms. Chateau brought forward, recognizing Maria Cristione Stell, the founding executive director of the Friends and Foundation of the St. Helena Public Library. This is a proclamation on her retirement, January 12th, 2021. And we've organized this, so I will read the beginning of this proclamation and then hand it over to Ms. Chateau to finish up and, and pass the proclamation off. So Maria, are you here with us? I'm seeing yes. Okay. So I'm going to read this. This is the city of St. Helena proclamation, recognizing Maria Cristione Stell, founding executive director, Friends and Foundation, St. Helena Public Library, proclamation on her retirement, January 12th, 2021. Whereas Maria Cristione Stell, founding executive director of Friends and Foundation, St. Helena Public Library, has retired after seven years guiding the organization's mission of advocacy and fundraising on behalf of the library. And whereas after the merger of two predecessor groups, Ms. Cristione Stell led the transformation of the organization to a professional, effective and successful local nonprofit in part by recruiting, engaging board members, creating bylaws and committees and setting up a solid financial structure, but especially by her leadership in establishing Friends and Foundation's annual fundraiser, bookmarked Napa Valley. And.
Whereas during Ms. Cristione Stell's tenure, Friends and Foundation raised more than 1.6 million to support programs, children's services, readings, new collections, films and other special events that foster civic engagement in St. Helena. And whereas Ms. Cristione Stell was a skilled, well-organized administrator, an excellent advocate and communicator, and a thoughtful, hardworking leader who made good decisions, got things done and believed in the value of her work. And whereas Maria Stell is admired and respected by her colleagues, board members, donors, library staff and city leadership, now therefore be it resolved that we, the city council of the city of St. Helena, proclaim January 12th, 2021, a day in St. Helena to honor and thank Maria Cristione Stell and ask everyone to thank her for her contributions to our library and the community it serves.
Maria, do you have a few words to share with us?
I mute myself. Okay. Hi, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and council members. I feel very lucky to have done this work for the past seven years, but I didn't work alone. So this honor is shared with the Friends and Foundation Board of Directors, current and past board members who donate their time, their talent and their energy to support our library. It's been an honor working with them, with the library trustees, with the library staff and city staff. And, and I just am overwhelmed. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. And I'm noticing, I think we have a few folks from the Friends and Foundation online too. So it's just a wonderful night and thank you for being here. And thank you, Ms. Chateau, for bringing this forward. And we're, we're just so, so pleased to have, have this organization and this part of our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll move to our consent calendar. Now my understanding is item 8.1 will be pulled for the next meeting. Is that correct? I'll look at the city clerk.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then I am.
Mr. Mayor, we need to go back to staff briefing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So we will go to item 7.1. This is the update on the wastewater treatment plant by Ms. Smithies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have closed our public comment period in December for the wastewater treatment plant's CEQA and NEPA documents. We only received one comment, so our consultant is working on the response to that. We are also at 90% plant development and we sent back our comments back to the consultants in early December. So we're prepared probably to bring an adoption of a CEQA mitigated meg deck document in February along with 100% design plans and specifications. I'll be working with our finance director and our city manager on the financing option plan so we can get this project started and hopefully starting construction this summer.
Thank you. Are there any council questions on, on where we are with this project? Okay, seeing none. I will move now to our city manager with our COVID 19. Oh, I'm seeing our vice mayor, Mr. Doring.
Thank you. Just, I don't know how far we've gotten into this and I don't expect an answer necessarily now, but I was wondering if we are looking into the question of our easement rights or access rights to the wastewater treatment plant that, that somebody is looking into that and will be reporting out either in open session or in closed session at some point. Thank you.
Yes, we are working on that. So thank you for asking that question. It was brought up, I believe, either the second meeting in November or early December, a question of whether our access. I have not been able to locate anything limiting our access to our existing plant, but I've made our consultant aware of it and any concerns with the upgrades to the plant facility.
Thank you.
We need to have our lawyers like look at it too, I assume, right?
I'm seeing some nods, yes. Okay. With that, we'll move to item 7.2. This is our city manager COVID 19 update.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot changing on the COVID front. And I'm pleased to let you know that we have coordinated a presentation from the county health director, Dr. Lucio. She will present an update, a COVID update to the city council and community at our next council meeting. But today, a lot of changes that I want to make sure everyone is aware of. So on January 9th, just a couple of days ago, we went through the first three weeks of this shelter at home order for the Bay Area region. And what happens after three weeks is the state looks forward. And if the trend is positive and if the ICU numbers, the capacity is above 15%, then the, the region is placed into the appropriate tier. Each county is placed into an, into a tier that's appropriate for them. Unfortunately, the forecast is not good at this time. The ICU capacity in Napa County today is zero. The region, the Bay Area region is 4.7%. So those numbers are, are quite low. Hope is that by the end of the month, we start to see a reduction, an improvement in the ICU capacity and a reduction in the number of cases. We reported today 179 cases in the past 24 hours. That's a very large number. We've experienced a lot of high numbers in the last couple of weeks following a number of these holidays. Today, there were seven cases reported in St. Helena. That tends to skew to one of the higher days. We had a number of 10 just a few days ago. We typically see anywhere from zero to three. So the numbers are still very high. It's still very important to follow all appropriate health protocols. I know that there are a lot of questions about vaccinations. And we, we began, we received some contact on Sunday and began organizing some support for a local vaccination effort. The vaccination process is going to follow state guidelines where they've prioritized various tiers and phases associated with who receives vaccination, vaccinations first. Each county and their partner health, their health partners will maybe move through these tiers and these phases a little bit differently than others. So keep in mind that it's possible that you'll hear about something happening in one county that may not be happening in our county or vice versa. The county's goal as early as really next week is to begin providing approximately 10,000 vaccinations per week. That's an ambitious goal, but I want you to know that all of the cities and the county staff have been asked to participate in supporting the administrative side of the deployment of the vaccine. And our, our city will be contributing a staff member to help support that effort. It's my understanding that as they move through implementation of this and as, and if you've heard, we do have some activities, some vaccination activity being provided through St. Helena Hospital and Adventist Health this week and likely transitioning to the Napa area next week. And this is really a phase in as we move into the, into a goal of 10,000 vaccinations per week. But that, that process is going to be supported by all of our collective partners. And this afternoon, the county website, countyofnapa.org, added what, what they are calling a COVID vaccination interest form. This is an online form where if you meet criteria for any of the phases or tiers, and right now we're really focused on phase one tiers, 1A, 1B and beyond, you can add your name to the list digitally, electronically. You acknowledge that you, you meet that criteria and that puts you in a queue to be notified of a vaccine and where they will notify people about where and when to go. I have to tell you that we're only in day two really of this and it's quite dynamic. It's quite fluid. We, we sent, each of the agencies sent their staff member today. I understand that we will be, the county will be training those individuals through the rest of the week. And the more comprehensive focused effort to pursue 10,000 vaccinations a week will begin likely next week and likely in the Napa area, although we don't have a location identified at this point. In addition to that, also under the COVID umbrella, I want to just address briefly, provide an update on the Hunt Avenue Hub. With, with our, our restaurants having zero capacity for indoor dining, a number of cities around the state have created pop-up park type locations or parklets. And essentially that's a way that that area is addressing COVID challenges on behalf of the challenging restaurant community. What we did last week is we modified the hub. In addition to removing the, the large snowflake, we reduced tables and increased distance between those tables. They were already at a safe distance, but that's been augmented to address, to reduce any potential for transmission. It's an outdoor space and should be considered similar to the other park locations that are available for our community to take an outdoor meal, take a takeout meal to. We've extended the, the notice on the street, no parking to February 1st, and that can be adjusted. So that concludes my COVID report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from the council on the report? I'm looking. I'm seeing no hands. Very good. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate it. And again, thank you for all the efforts from the, the city staff through these COVID times. Okay, we'll move now to the consent items and we're going to start looking at 8.1. That will be moved to our next meeting. And then I would like to pull off to briefly comment on 8.5 and 8.7. Are there, if I'm going to read through the numbers, if there are any others, folks, let me know if they'd like to be pulled or if somebody sees Ms. Nixon, if you see somebody from the community on our, on our remote. So 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5 and 8.6. And I'm asking for 8.5 and 8.7 to be pulled. So is there a motion for those items other than 8.1, 8.5 and 8.7 to be passed in a motion?
Well, I'll see if I can get this right here. I move approval of 8.2, 8.3, 8.4 and 8.6.
I'll second.
Can I roll call, please?
Council member Hardy?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dory?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay. And then we'll just move to 8.5. This one I just wanted to pull to recognize this is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $50,000 from the El Bob and Evelyn Trincherro Charitable Fund for the City of St. Helena Fire Department for wildfire recovery and relief and approving the attached letter as the written agreement of acceptance. I just wanted to express gratitude for this, for the generosity of this gift. And it also ties in certainly with our efforts towards fire preparedness and are recently putting through the mechanisms for acceptance of charitable donations. So once again, just a deep, deep thank you and gratitude to the Trincherro Charitable Trust for this gift. So with that, is there a motion to pass this item? Do we do this separately or with 8.7? So I'll take the motion.
Separately, please.
Okay. So I will take the motion.
So move. I'll second with a comment. I just want to note that this is just one more in a lifetime of major contributions to this community from the Trincherros.
Agreed. Thank you.
Council member Hardy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dory? Council member Chateau?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. And now we'll move to item 8.7. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution adopting the City of St. Helena 2021 Employee Handbook superseding prior versions of the handbook. I pulled this because I want to recognize our city manager and our city staff for the, for the work to update this, this handbook. This is a legacy project that had not been looked at in, in a long time and, and really needed to be updated. And I'm just going to pass it to, to Mr. Presswich for just a moment to just give us a little outline of what this is and the value of this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a handbook that was last updated in 2005, so more than 15 years ago. And, and this is a document that used to be updated every, a couple of times a year. When we look back at the history in the early 2000s, council actions that occur affecting employment or benefits, working conditions are often, are, or should be, they should be incorporated into this handbook. And the handbook, it's important that the handbook is aligned with our memorandums of understanding, our MOUs and agreements with our employee bargaining groups. And after working on inventorying all the actions of the council since 2005 and integrating those into this new document, which was frankly rewritten and went through a lot of edits and review by our bargaining groups, by attorneys, grateful for the staff work in putting all of those, documenting all of that and then incorporating this into a new document. I also want to thank Kathy Robinson, our human resources and IT director who's on this meeting tonight for all of her work in bird dogging this. This is such an important document because internally it, it governs the, the work and the responsibilities of our employees. And it's so important to keep that up to date. We don't want to ever fall behind again. And our commitment is to bring this to you for amendment as those, as adjustments are made. So thank you for acknowledging that work.
Thank you. Thank you for, for, for making that happen, particularly through these last many months of challenges for something like this to come forward now is, is really remarkable. So thank you. So with that, I'll, I'll look for a motion on 8.7.
I'll move with a comment, if I may. This is, I think, a particularly apt example of what I call administrative infrastructure and a reminder when we fail to maintain our administrative infrastructure, it has the same kind of consequences that occur when we fail to maintain our physical infrastructure. A lot more time and effort is required when, when the item is neglected. So I, my hat's off to the city manager for getting this done. I, I've got a pretty good idea of what, what kind of task that was. That's a very hearty. That's a very hearty and grateful motion for approval.
All right, I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yeah.
Chito.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dory.
Yes.
Mayor Elsworth.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. And we will move now past our public hearings and old business. We'll move to new business. This is item 11.1. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution appointing two applicants to the planning commission and consider leaving the recruitment open for the active transportation and sustainability committee. Unfilled terms of office until filled. Ms. Japholus, would you take us into this item, please?
Yes, please. So in mid-November, the city clerk, Michelle, advertised a recruitment seeking applicants from the community to fill two vacancies on the planning commission and four on the active transportation and sustainability committee. The recruitment seeking applicant, we actually received nine applications for the planning commission, but none for the active transportation and sustainability committee. For the rules of procedure, appointments shall be made by interview ballot process and the mayor shall nominate applicants with the appointment subject to approval by the majority of the city council. Just so you're aware, the city council convened an applicant interview meeting just this afternoon at 4:00 PM and was well attended. So staff recommends adopting a resolution appointing applicants to the planning commission and leaving the recruitment open for the active transportation and sustainability committee. And if I might add, I would just really like to encourage those applicants that applied for the planning commission. If they're not chosen, the active transportation and sustainability committee would be a fantastic way to get involved in the community and learn the process of boards and committees. And I would be, I would be, I would love to take an application or put forward your application from the planning commission towards filling one of those seats. And if you have any questions, if you have any questions for me, please provide them.
Very good. Any initial questions or comments from council? Okay, now my, I believe Mr. Hardy had some comments regarding process here that he wanted to bring forward.
Well, all comments and concerns. The ballot process is, as I understand it, and it makes sense to me, is a response. And I can tell from the history of the resolutions, it was adopted in 2018. And it followed a particularly difficult meeting. When was the last time we had such a large number of applicants? It was in June 2017. I remember it well because that's the meeting at which I was appointed to the planning commission. There were 11 applicants for three vacancies. And the mayor at that time proceeded to, without discussion with the council, simply go through his list, the first eight nominations all were rejected on a roll call vote. And then the last three out of the 11 nominations were appointed. It was very awkward. And I believe I can accurately say that none of the eight applicants who were rejected on a roll call vote ever applied again. So I, I understand why there was some concern about avoiding a repeat. But what I see here in the balloting process doesn't look to me like a remarkable improvement, frankly, since it calls for all of us to rank all nine applicants in order of preference, one through nine. Those ballots, whether we read them tonight or not, are a public record. And we end up in a similar situation without maybe so much of the drama of a formal roll call. Somebody comes out ninth, somebody comes out eighth and so on. And, and it seems to me that if the goals are twofold. One, to provide enough information for the mayor who has the duty and responsibility of making nominations, enough information so that he has a fairly good idea of the collective preferences without unnecessarily exposing unsuccessful applicants to the embarrassment of coming out seventh, eighth or ninth, or whatever it is. Frankly, I think the best way to proceed is simply to have a discussion about our preferences. But failing that, if we stick to the ballot process, I strongly recommend that we start with just our top three or four. I, I don't really see any good coming from going one through nine. That sounds like it, it ends up being way too close to the situation that prompted this change. Only taking out of the picture the long procession of roll call votes. Those, those are my comments and concerns.
I, I think that, I'm glad, I'm glad to have you bring that up. I want to just check in with our city attorney here. I, I, in a sense concur that the idea of this is a, it's an advisory to the mayor to where there may be support. And the idea of perhaps three or four from each person or through discussion, I'm not sure, I just where, where I want to check with our city attorney. If we were to look at altering our current method, would we be okay if we looked at that? I'd certainly want to check in with the rest of the council too, to get their thoughts on that.
If, if that's the council, I think that's okay. It's consistent with what's in your municipal code, which is limited to stating that the appointments shall be made by the, by the mayor with the consent of the, or the approval of the city council. So as long as you adhere to that, that would be the, the ultimate action that would be taken. And as long as you do that, if you want to deviate from your, from this ballotting process, then I, I think that would be okay as long as the entire council concurs with that or a majority of the council concurs with that approach.
Okay. Any thoughts from the vice mayor, Mr. Hall or Ms. Chito on, on this? Ms. Chito?
I think that that sounds like a better process.
Okay. So would we want to have, you know, we'll have some, oh, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I am actually prepared to rank them one, you know, all of them. I don't, I don't see that necessarily as, you know, some kind of a demerit. I, I just don't see it that way, but I do agree with the, the notion that that alone should not be the end of it, that we should have a discussion. Maybe some of the council members that they so choose can talk about some of their, their top choices for whatever reason they give. I think we can do both. I don't, I don't see that as, I mean, I can see the point of, well, you, you got ranked, so therefore you're, you may, your feelings may be heard, but I just think that folks are, understand that they're all equally qualified. They're exemplary candidates. Each one can fill these slots. But it requires us to do some, some prioritization and we're, we're doing that. So that's my sort of compromise, you know? I think we should have a discussion for sure. That, that's the important part. I, I think the ranking is less important, but it is some, it gives some indication when you have close calls, who, who is, what the consensus is, put it that way. And, and I guess you could achieve that through three or four. I, I am going to do all nine and everybody can do whatever they want, frankly. You know, whatever your comfort zone is or all, whatever the numbers are.
Is it, would it be if we were to choose a number like three or four? Is it, is it perhaps better to have a consistency for the group to all do the same number? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think it's preferable. I, I think if, if, you know, going through the top three or four makes the collective preference clear, then we're done. We go on to nominations or one or two. If, if it fails to result into appointments, then we go deeper, but.
Shall we, shall we, could we concur on four to sort of round it out a little bit more as Mr. Doring suggests? There may be some help getting an extra name on there. Does that sound acceptable to the group? And, and we can revisit this at a, at another time, but just trying to, you know, stick with what is, in a sense, the plan, but with some modification. So if, if there's no objection, if we suggest four to be listed by each council member, once, you know, I think if we have a little discussion, if, if folks are comfortable now beginning a bit of discussion on candidates, or would there be a preference to do the, the sort of rank first and then come back after that?
My preference would be to discuss first.
Okay. Is that something you would like to start off with, Mr. Hardy?
Sure. I don't, I don't mind taking the lead on that since I'm prompting this. I think that's only fair. So I'll start with some general comments that have to do with how I'm trying to sort this out. And, and it is a challenge having nine very qualified and very appealing candidates for just two spaces. It seems like we, we tend to oscillate between feast and famine with these requests for applications. Either we get very few or too few, or on occasion a sort of wealth of riches. But, you know, I, I am, I'm mindful of some lessons I learned when I applied two years ago for a vacancy on the city council. I was not appointed, but I did hear a lot at that time, and I was already on the planning commission from council members about the importance of the planning commission and the work that was in front of it. And I heard from most, though not all of the council members that in spite of my qualifications for the council, that, that they thought it more important that I stay on the planning commission with the challenges ahead of that body. And I'll be completely honest, the outcome that evening was very disappointing to me at the time. But after another two years on the commission, I have come to appreciate the sentiments behind that decision. And I know that some of the work that, that was discussed then, for example, the update to the zoning ordinance is still in process. And the housing element is coming soon and there may be other major projects. So I think the work in front of the planning commission is, if anything, more significant now than it was two years ago, just in terms of a two-year timeframe. So we're, we're in a very unusual situation with respect to this pool of applicants in that we have two applicants who were candidates for the city council in the recent election. It's, I can think of any number of occasions when people on the planning commission have been appointed to fill a council vacancy. And I can think of other occasions when recent unsuccessful council candidates have been appointed to fill a council vacancy. But I can't think of any time in the last 30-plus years when unsuccessful council candidates have applied to the planning commission. It, it forces one to think a little bit differently. And, and one concern I have moving forward is with continuity on the commission. I, I think in general, we want, we want people to stay as long as possible. That knowledge base accumulates over time. And so, you know, going with those general thoughts, something more particular, I'm always looking for a balance of viewpoints and skill sets, if you will. In the, in this moment, with this list of candidates, I, I'm very strongly in support of Rosara Segura, Philip Award, Patrick Rue and Chris Fowler. Those are my top four. In something more or less like that order, maybe not exactly. So that's where I'll start. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members at this point? I'm seeing Ms. Chito.
Just councilmember Hardy, could you say those four again? I'm taking.
That was Rosara Segura, Philip Award, Patrick Rue and Chris Fowler.
Any other council comment at this point? Okay, so the, the, oh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You know, I don't want to go on and on. Other than to say, I tend to agree, not necessarily with the, the choices in the order that have been presented, but with the sentiment behind the choices. I think if I'm not mistaken, Lester, Councilmember Hardy and I are the only two that actually served on planning commission. And it is a unique body and it's, it's not only a matter of looking at the individual, but looking at the sort of the, how the group comes together to do the work that they're assigned to do. And that interaction is, is extremely important. I found that having a diversity of viewpoints is actually a healthy thing to have. I, for me, the most important things are this sense of impartiality. That, that rises way to the top. That one, I don't agree, agree with this notion that, that somebody does not have a bias, but I do agree that folks have the ability to set aside their natural biases. I think we all have bias, but can we set them aside and look at what's before us and not have a preconceived agenda? Those, to me, are very important. Diversity of viewpoint is extremely important, not only in terms of how the, the planning commission works, but in terms of the messages that we're sending to our community. It, it's a core value for me in, in many different ways. And I don't, we don't need to get into that, but I, I do agree with councilmember Hardy's sentiment and sort of the, and I do appreciate, by the way, the fact that he finally came around as to why we thought it was important for him to serve on the planning commission. Cause I was, I got a lot of grief from that, but I'm glad to hear what you're saying tonight.
And your comments there. Okay. So it's important for folks to know that the, the comments, the, the ranking is advisory to the mayor. It's a nomination that the mayor makes. And the idea here is, is, is putting information out. So, so that nomination can be made with, with, from an informed perspective. Are there any other comments at this point from the council in terms of the candidates or the applicants? Okay, so I'm seeing none. What I would like to do then is we'll take a break. Cindy, are we at the point where we'll take a break? And then we will come back and, and we will do our, our rankings and then come back and then we will make the nomination.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And how long? Okay. And how long a break are you anticipating we take here?
I'm hoping, I, I know we usually only take a five-minute break, but I might need a little bit longer than five minutes.
How is 10 minutes? Is that okay? And that gives everybody a chance to get a glass of water? Is that enough time for you?
Thank you. Thank you. That would be wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And what exactly are we going to be doing during the break? Just to be more explicit, we're going to be ranking four, four members? Is that the consensus? And then we're going to be scanning that document and emailing it to you or screenshotting it? Or, and we're going to do one at a time, right? Just the planning commission now?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just the top four.
Yes.
Top four. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that in this process, you're giving the opportunity for public comment. I think now would probably be the appropriate time for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So this is, we're going to, before we go into this break, we're going to open this up to public comment. And if Ms. Nixon, our assistant to the city manager, could take a look at our attendees and see if we have public comment. Thank you.
All right. I am looking right now to see if there is public comment. I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, very good. So we'll close public comment on that. We'll take a break for 10 So let me make sure we've got everybody back here. We've got Mr. Doring, Mr. Hardy, Ms. Chateau, and Mr. Hall, and our city manager. So are you going to announce those tallies? Is that the plan here, Cindy?
I was going to announce the tallies. The top number of votes, 42, went to Rosara Segura. The second top vote went to Philippa Ward with 25 votes. And then the next would be Patrick Rue with 21, and Marika Rothfeld with also having 21. So those are the top four. Marika Rothfeld, Patrick Rue, Philippa Ward, and Rosara Segura.
I'm sorry. So Rosara with 42, Philippa with 25, Patrick 21, and the fourth was? Okay. So we'll move now to the nomination process. There's no further discussion. So I'm going to start with the four-year term. And my nomination for that term is for Rosara, Rosara Segura, is many reasons. I think that Rosara brings a balanced approach to what she does. She's an attorney. She's, she's understands the balance with the community and the wine industry. She brings representation of the Latinx community. I think she's, she's going to bring something to our city that, as a resident here for many years, and her commitment to public service already, she's going to be ready to step in and work on a board such as this. And so that's, you know, she's got a history of engagement and service in the community. She's got many letters of reference and, and the recommendations, the references, I think are important. So that is my recommendation, or my nomination for the four-year term would be for Rosara Segura. And I would seek support for that recommendation, or for that nomination.
Mr. Mayor, is that, Mr. Mayor, is that a motion to nominate Rosara Segura to a four-year term?
Yes. Yes, I would like to make that motion.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so for my next, for the next nomination, this is going to be for the six-month period, the shorter period. My nomination is for Leslie Stanton. I realize that she's not one of the top vote-getters, but to me, Leslie has brought, for many, many years, something very important to this town in terms of understanding our community and the balances here. She ran for city council and did a very good job in terms of getting support from the community. Many letters of support for Leslie for this position on the council. She worked for the city for many years, so she has a, an understanding of our local city, our local government, and institutional knowledge, and an attention to detail. She will help bring a, the lenses of climate and social and racial equity to the planning commission. These are issues that she's been willing to stand up on and, and speak out about. She's a beloved person in our community for many generations of children. As a public servant, or as a, as a, as a public, as a city employee, she's always been very approachable, and I think that's going to be important as a public servant as well. Her family's been here since the 1940s, began farming here from the 1970s on. So she has an understanding of that balance with the wine industry that is a big part of what we do here. She's a champion for our underserved population and for racial and social equity. And she understands the need for affordable housing and projects to be built in the scale and with respect to the respective neighborhoods. This is a, a thing that I, I think is very important, is, is the commitment to housing. And she understands the, the critical balance between development and the environment. So she, Leslie would be my, my choice for the six-month appointment. And I'd like to see if there are any comments from the council on that before I put forward that nomination.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask one clarifying question?
Certainly.
I'm just trying to understand your thinking a little bit more. You, in the previous nomination, had indicated that Rosada Segura was an attorney?
Yes.
I don't believe that is the case. And I wanted to know whether that, being an attorney, having those analytical skills, being able to kind of feel comfortable with zoning codes and general plans and, and process, and being able to sort of go through a lot of information in preparation for these meetings would be important to you. I don't believe that Rosada Segura is an attorney, and so I was thinking, maybe you thought that was an important qualification. And I just wanted to check with you on that.
I'm sorry if I, if I missed that piece of information. I think her, Rosara's resume is a full resume with, with, that will, that will, that has given her the experience to be able to, to do that kind of analysis and working through material. So that was my mistake if I, if I had mentioned her as an attorney. So, but I think from her resume and what she's served on, she'd be very capable of analyzing the material.
That's fine. I just wanted to, to, I think Councilmember Harding listed his list. I'll list my list just to put it on the table. Had Rosada Segura, Marika Rothfeld, Michael Mills, and Chris Fowler. And I do think that having a legal background is important. So I'll just, for the, for the reasons I mentioned.
Okay.
I guess I'm biased, I must admit.
Are there any other thoughts, Mr. Hardy? I'm getting a little clarification here. I'm sorry.
That might be.
Yeah. So thank, Rosara had said, thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Paul. Do you, Mr. Hardy, do you have any, any thoughts on the nomination of Leslie Stanton for the six-month appointment?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Ms. Chateau or Mr. Hall?
The only thing I would add is that I think that we should stick with going to one of the people that we just all chose as our top four, if we're respecting the process.
Yeah, I, I thought that was the whole, whole point of that process.
It's, it's an advisory process. The, the process is to advise the mayor of where the council stands. And the nomination is the, the privilege of the mayor to make, regardless of the advisory ballot. And so I'm making my, you know, case for why I believe that this person is the, is, is the right person for this role. And that, that, that is my nomination. And so, you know, as I respect your input and your advisory ballots, it's not my obligation to, to, to go along with, with the advisory. And so, as I said, this is, this is my, my nomination for who I believe would be the right applicant for that, that shorter period that, that, you know, could be extended. So with that, if there's no further comment, I'm going to make a, a motion for the nomination of Leslie Stanton for the six-month period. And am I seeing a second or not? I'm not seeing a second. Okay. Now I'll move then to my list here. My next choice for that six-month period would be Chris Fowler. I felt that Chris has a background in, not just in, in living here, but also in looking at, as he said, zoning issues. He's raising a family here. I believe he's committed to being here and has a background and an interest in the downtown area, which I think is important. That's going to be an important aspect of what we're doing here, moving up with the streetscape and the downtown programs. His father or his family had a business here, so I think he's familiar with the area and business aspects. I also thought the fact that he lived in a, in the town of Truckee, which is not the same size as St. Helena, but has a lot of similarities in terms of balances between visitation and folks who live there. So that would be my next nomination for the six-month period would be for Chris Fowler.
I'll second that.
And with that, Cindy, is there a roll call?
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau? Councilmember Hardy? Councilmember Hall?
Okay. So with that, then, I will move to next choice, which is, let me go down my, so my next choice would be Marika Rothfeld. I feel that she'll bring something to the council or to the planning commission in terms of looking, being able to look at the specifics of the zoning. She'll bring a youthful presence to the council. She's, she has a background in the town or the commission. She has a background in the town. And so I think she would be an excellent fit on the commission as well. So that would be my nomination for the six-month period would be Marika Rothfeld.
Second. I didn't hear a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would make a motion for, for Marika Rothfeld to be the, my nomination for the six-month period.
Second.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Very good. So we've got our appointments for the two planning commission spots. I want to thank everybody for putting in the applications. It means a lot to the community. Spots continue to come up. There are elections every few years. So please keep your eyes on the city and what comes up for commissions and availabilities, because your participation here is, is, is really critical. So thank you, everybody, for the applications for the planning commission. And now let's move to our, our water board.
If I may, I'd like to extend my thanks as well. And it, it is always a very challenging process when we have a lot of applicants. And I think very unusual to have an interview process like we had this evening with so little time, really, for full engagement between the applicants and the council. It's just a matter of coincidence. But I hope everyone who's applied will continue to stay engaged. It's one of the most wonderful things about living and working and participating in public life in this community, that we have so many people keenly interested and dedicated to addressing our, our community needs, our issues and concerns. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hardy, for putting those thoughts out there. Your, your service on the planning commission was, was really a tremendous gift to this community. And your, your willingness to, to be there and keep navigating forward, really critical. So thank, particularly looking back to the general plan. That, that was a huge legacy step forward. And your involvement with that was really valuable to this city. So, and so for you to put those words out there to these other applicants, I think very important. So thank you. So we'll, we'll move now to our water advisory board. So with this, we're looking for one city council member, one planning commissioner, one winery customer, and two public members, one of whom shall be solely a residential customer. Mr. Hale has volunteered as a planning commissioner. I'm seeing Cindy's hand.
Would you first like a report?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
All right. So on June 23rd, 2020, the city council adopted a resolution establishing Phase One water regulations based on our municipal code, section 13.04.230, where conditions requiring establishment of a Phase Two water emergency, as determined by the Director of Public Works, appeared to be imminent. At the time of the emergency, the city had extremely low rainfall at 20 inches, a forecast for a potential multi-year drought, and Bell Canyon reservoir was at 60% capacity. Water operations had also implemented changes to conserve Bell Canyon water usage by optimizing Stone Bridge wells in the City of Napa water use. The forecast was for potential Phase Two trigger by November 2020. On October 13th, 2020, the Public Works Director informed the city council that a Phase Two water emergency had been triggered on October 1st, 2020. So tonight, the city council will appoint the water advisory board, and their duties are determined by our municipal code. And as the mayor mentioned, the, the board is comprised of one city council member, one planning commissioner, one winery customer, and two public members, one of whom shall solely be a residential customer. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be free to answer.
Very good. Thank you. And once again, as we mentioned earlier, this is a, it's, it's a, not a policy, a board to a board to direct policy, but a board, uh, responding to appeals, uh, with, uh, from community, uh, members or businesses having issues with, um, sort of the, um, uh, the costs of, of, as we go into these, uh, next phases, penalties, et cetera. And this is a board that will listen to appeals and, uh, try to find, uh, uh, outcomes that, that work for the community. Um, so Cindy, are we gonna take a break here to fill these out as well? Is that the thought here?
Probably need to open it for public comment.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Very good, Paul. Thanks.
That, and also if you would like to also have council discussion and talk about, um, the lack of, of, uh, commitments from a council member to be a, um, applicant for the water advisory board.
Yeah, we'll have that conversation.
Discussion.
We'll have that conversation. So, yeah, so why don't we, why don't we...
Lack of commitment.
Why don't we have a little, uh, council conversation, uh, and then we'll open it to public comment and then we'll move to the next step? Are there any initial comments from council or interest in being, uh, on this board from one of our council members? It's certainly a, a way to really begin understanding our water system as, as we, you know, this, it is the critical, uh, aspect of, of civilization and community is, is how we administrate water. It's at the core of it. If there's an interest, um, I, Mr. Hardy, I don't know how your plate is stacking up. You've got a background looking at water issues. Is this something that, uh, you would feel comfortable stepping into or one of our, or, or, uh, Mr. Hall or Ms. Chateau? I know that Vice Mayor is a little, uh, loaded down. Does anybody feel they've got some capacity?
I, I, I don't have the capacity with, uh, my commitment both to the groundwater sustainability plan committee and the work group. I'm booked.
Okay.
I wish it were. That's how it is.
Mr. Hall, would this be an opportunity for you to kind of work, you know, with our water folks and sort of understand the system?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure it would be an opportunity to do that, Jeff. I'm just, I haven't volunteered because of my own time constraints. So, uh, Anna, if it's something you don't have interest in, or you have your own constraints, then I'm happy to, uh, take this on.
I have constraints, but I'm happy to do it.
See, I'm seeing Cindy's hand here.
I just wanted to remind the council members that the, the board would conclude at the moment that we were no longer in a drought. So if we all go out and wash our cars, hopefully we'll get a good rain and we will be out of the drought.
I will do it and I will encourage everybody to do a rain dance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
They're married, they, there may very well be no appeals. You just never know.
Yeah. Eric, also, thank you for, for stepping up if, if it didn't work out for anybody else. It's appreciated. But, uh, so Anna, thank you. And so then we have a planning commissioner. Mr. Hale has volunteered. And so now we will look at our, uh, pub, two public members. Oh, and then our winery customer, Ms. Ortiz Tohi, um, from, uh, Sutter Hope, uh, Trincherro Estates, um, was the one winery customer. Uh, so, uh, she will, um, have a spot, which, and it's very much appreciated, her stepping up. And so now we have our two public members. We have six applicants. And Cindy, is this a place where we take a break for, uh, just a couple of minutes? I'm sorry, we're gonna do public comment.
Yeah, I was gonna say public comment, maybe.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay, I'm gonna open it for public comment and, uh, if Ms. Nixon, our assistant to the city manager, would, uh, let us know if anybody out there is, uh, is, um, putting a hand up.
Sure. So I'm looking right now to see if there's any public comment and I, I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, very good. I'm, I'm seeing Anna Chateau. I'll close public comment, bring it back to Ms. Chateau.
Thank you. Just a clarifying question. Are we putting our top four the same that we did before? Are we putting everybody?
Let's do the top four, if that's okay with the group, just to be consistent with the previous.
Great.
Okay. So we'll take a break. We'll be back in 10 and, uh, we'll see everybody at, uh, 7:57. Okay, we're just getting settled back here. I think we've got one more minute and, uh, we'll let Cindy, I'm gonna text Cindy just to, to make sure she's got time. I don't wanna rush her if she's in the middle of that. Okay, who do we have here? We've got, uh, Mr. Hardy, Mr. Paul, Ms. Chateau, Mr. Doring, and our city manager. And Cindy should be up here soon.
I, I was having some technical difficulties. May have slowed her down a little.
Okay.
This would be a perfect time to play some music while Cindy's not monitoring me.
What do you have there?
I don't know. Maybe some old school Earth, Wind &amp; Fire?
Ah, there you go.
I made an eight-and-a-quarter-hour playlist over the course of the pandemic. Keep it going for a month.
Absolutely. You gotta find joy wherever it is. There we go.
That's Aretha Franklin, in case anyone, uh, cares.
Cindy, are you able to get on, uh, the audio there? We got it.
No, I, I'm good now.
Thank you for the musical interlude. That was, uh, perfect timing.
Darn, I missed it.
So Cindy, you're back. Uh, some Aretha Franklin. So Cindy, you're back with the results of the, uh, the tally. And, uh, would you like to read those off? Are there any council comments before Cindy, uh, reads those off? Any, uh, any thoughts at this point? I'm not seeing any hands. I'm seeing Mr. Hardy.
Yes, I, I, again, we're, you know, we're, we're blessed to have, uh, a great collection of applicants. You know, uh, I'm, I made my rankings basically out of, uh, you know, real awareness that, that, uh, it's an appeals board and, and I'm looking for people that I, I believe have a good sense of what's required to, um, to be fair and, and, and recognize hardship and do the right thing. And, uh, I, I doubt we can go wrong with any of these applicants.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments before Cindy gives us some numbers? I'm seeing none. So Cindy, if you'd like to let us know, uh, what the numbers were?
Sure. And before I go there, I just wanna just mention again, we have a wonderful applicant pool even for the water advisory board. And if any one of the applicants would be, would wanna consider applying for the, um, to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee, I would love to put your application forward. So with that being said...
And let me just ju- jump on that very quickly. This is gonna be a really interesting time coming up over the next, uh, couple of years, looking at how we address, uh, what we do through a climate lens, through a sustainability lens, which ties into transportation. So, uh, yeah, with this applicant pool, please, uh, step forward for that ATSC committee. And I think there's gonna be a lot of activity there that your input will be really helpful and valuable on. So with that, Cindy, please.
So, uh, Mr. Brent Randall received, uh, the top number of 30 votes. The second would be George Schisler at 21 votes. And then next would be Elizabeth Gray with 13. And then fourth would be Richard Wallach with 12 votes.
Okay. So, um, if there's no, uh, further, uh, council discussion this one, I would put Brent Randall forward as a nomination, uh, for this position. Uh, I would, I would make a motion, uh, on the nomination of...
I'll second that.
Looks like the city manager had something to offer.
Is there, Mr. Presswich?
I just wanna be, I, I wanna make sure that we're clear on, uh, as we nominate the two members, one, uh, should be a residential customer. I wanna make sure we call that out so we document that for our record.
Yes. And my understanding is, is Mr. Randall, that is, as he's applying?
Well, just to be clear, what does that mean? So I, I don't know, all the particular circumstances of all these individuals could, and maybe I'm raised in legal issues, but, so if somebody owns a home but doesn't live here, are they a residential customer? Owns a home here but doesn't live here? I, I mean, I, I don't wanna get too fussy about it.
I, I see you, what you're saying, is there a delineation?
And do they have to live inside the city limits?
My understanding is yes for this board, that it has to be in the city limits. Am I correct there, Cindy?
It was my understanding, if they were a customer, a water customer.
We have a lot of people who own their own homes that are connected to city water outside the city limits.
Yes.
I, I, I can't really make any sense out of excluding, uh, that whole group from, uh, consideration.
I agree. Certainly, yeah, I, I concur as well. Uh, and so, um, the next, uh, was, uh, Mr. Schisler. And I would, um...
Well, wait a minute. Did we, I don't think we have a second and a vote, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we get a second without a vote?
I'll second. I'll second Brent Randall.
I had, for Brett Randall, I have noted that, uh, Mayor Ellsworth made the motion and I believe Councilmember Hardy made a second.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Sorry.
That's okay. Shall I go ahead and call for the vote?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy. Chateau.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes, every time you say Hall, it sounds like Paul, so I'm ready to respond. Sorry.
Oh, goodness. All right, I think we're ready for the second nomination for the second public member.
Okay, my nomination for that would be, uh, George Schisler. I, I think his background is an attorney as we look at, uh, sitting on this board. Uh, and, uh, his background, sitting on, on boards, I think he's got some experience there. Uh, I think he'll be able to bring a, uh, a good presence here. And so that is, uh, would make the nomination for Mr. Schisler as the second, uh, public member of the water advisory board.
I'll second.
Uh, Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councilor Chateau.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Very good. So we have our water advisory board, uh, much appreciated and, uh, we'll keep doing the rain dance. Oh, I see Cindy.
Diana.
Would you wanna go ahead and make an official motion to appoint Eric Hall as the council member and Dan Hale as the planning commission representative?
Certainly.
Is it, Ethan, do you think it's necessary to do the official?
Oh, it's, it's Anna. Anna, Anna will, will take that role.
Right, it was, it was Anna, but, but yes, Cindy, I, I do think, um, we, we could do it by a single motion, but all the people who had, um, volunteered, uh, so Commissioner Hale, uh, Councilmember Chateau, um, and the, uh, the, the winery, um, customer.
Right.
Whose name is escaping me right now, but...
Anna Ortiz, Triggy.
Thank you.
So I would, I would make that motion.
Second.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Happy to point others to this work, yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, stop making me laugh.
Hall.
Yes.
Chateau.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for, uh, and, uh, Priya, for all your work on putting this all together. Thank you very much. Thank you, council. And thank you again, all the applicants. And, uh, yeah, please step up for the ATSC board or, or, uh, committee.
Thank you, all, all applicants. I do appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Ditto.
So now now we'll move to our final item, which is the the 2021 city council meeting calendar. And this is prepared by our city clerk. Will you take us into this?
Sure. So it's always appropriate to annually review the city's annual meeting calendar. And just so you the new council members are aware, traditionally, we usually take we go dark, the first meeting in July and the second meeting in December. And this kind of allows staff and the council to take the time to plan a vacation or just just to take a break, just have a breather. And so if you would like to, if you have any questions or if you would like to make any comments, please do so.
Any thoughts from the council? Has this been working pretty well as it is? Having those two dark days, one in the summer and one at the holidays, seems to work pretty well and lets people have vacations, both council and staff. So, Mr. Hall?
Cindy, you're you're showing both of those as scheduled right now on the calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we and I we just need feedback from the council to either confirm or if you have another different recommendation.
I don't. Sounds good to me.
Okay. And Anna, Paul, I'm sure everybody's good with this.
So so the recommendation is to take the second meeting off in July and and December, correct?
Yes.
Traditionally, we've taken off the first meeting in July and the second meeting in December.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Okay. Do you need a motion or do you just need direction?
I would just love to have consensus from all the council members to keep the the traditional calendar or if they would like to change.
I think you've got consensus. Thank you.
Okay. We will go, we will move forward as is.
Okay, so that's our final item. I want to just once again, thank everybody, thank the council, staff, the community. We've got to stick it out here with this COVID for for a while longer, so let's stay vigilant. Let's let's keep being thankful for each other and practice those three W's and support our local community, support our local businesses, takeout, delivery, gift card challenge, row in the boat together here over the next month or two. And we'll get to the we'll get to the end of this into a better spot. Thank you, everybody, and we will see you at the next meeting.
Thank you for a good meeting, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good night.